Good evening, welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen meeting of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please rise and say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we want to start with approving the warrant articles. We've got one withholding article for seven fourteen twenty-one for twenty-two thousand eight hundred three dollars and twenty cents, but a second for withholding article for seven twenty-eight twenty-one for fifty-one thousand four ninety-seven twenty-five. We've got an expense warrant for eight ten twenty-one for three ninety-nine eight sixty-eight sixty. Then we have a payroll warrant for eight eleven twenty-one for one sixty-eight two fifty-three seventy-five.
I will make the motion that we approve the withholding warrant, two withholding warrants, an expense warrant and a payroll warrant.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have two sets of selectmen's minutes.
There's also this, another I put in there too for August third. I don't know if you had a chance to review what Lynda did?
Yeah.
I don't know what you did.
I did not, but if you guys can give me, I did read the ones in advance for the twenty-seventh, so.
Wasn't that one the executive board?
Executive and irregular, and then there's also eight.
Yeah, I read them and they were, I looked them over and, oh, you have them now?
Yeah, I have it here. I've got the, I've got all of them here, so. I had looked at the ones for the twenty-seventh. They looked, didn't see any material inaccuracies.
No, they look fine.
It has all of our votes recorded. And then the August third. That was the August third, that was the, was open meeting, or was that?
That was for the contract for the account.
Okay, that was off the contract for the account. All right, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of August third, July twenty-seventh, and then the executive minutes from July twenty-seventh?
Yes, you have that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so it looks like we had, um, let's take this in, since we have a highway superintendent here, let's start with new business.
Okay.
So, come on down. Jane, do we have any materials relative to this? Did you provide us materials in advance for this? Or do you just have the notes that you have?
I didn't. I have this, which we just got today.
Okay.
And I just wanted to inform you about what we did. We actually got two grants. One is a shared streets, which will be the Maple Street, Central and Route nine intersection. And then we also got a complete streets grant for Central Street, which is, it'll go from about Common Street to the Route nine intersection.
Now, are those the ones we had gotten some money years, a couple of years back to do? And don't, didn't they need water lines? Was that the ones they needed out here on Central Street?
So we are going to discuss with the wa, I'm going to discuss with the Water Department tomorrow about doing the water main. That hasn't been decided yet.
Oh, okay, all right.
That'll be a separate, it'll be the same project, but a separate cost.
Okay.
We can't pay for water main with a complete streets grant.
Yeah, okay. Now, you said that's Central Street and what?
And then the Route nine, Maple and end of Central Street intersection, that's a shared streets grant. So that one's for right around one sixty-five and Central Street's four hundred thousand.
Now, another question I have, oh, is the state going to be coming in and doing anything like here in Brookfield that they did in Westbrookfield with the, with the new sidewalks or anything?
Um, no.
No, okay.
That would be a complete streets grant? It's a different, it's a different program.
This is different, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, and actually, and actually it sounds like we, we got one of each, so it sounds like for an aspect of the project. Let me guess, it's kind of like a single project, but we've got two separate grants that are helping to fund it.
We have two separate grants and we're going to tie them both into one project because they're, they're right there. One, you know, one contractor, hopefully.
Okay.
Okay.
Water main has to get ironed out. We kind of tentatively agreed that we'd probably use the same engineer, engineering company for water and the street design. And I actually have a quote from them on what that would cost.
Okay.
And is, is the engineering work high enough value in and of itself that, that we have any type of?
They're exempt from procurement. Engineering is exempt from procurement.
Oh, okay. So what did you get for a price on that?
So it's, now you gotta remember, this is water, the water design and the street, and it's a hundred eighty-seven thousand. The breakdown's here. You guys can check this out. And this is actually the company that helped us get these grants.
Now, the, the grant funding?
Cannot pay for the.
Cannot pay for the engineering. So what's the proposed?
We can't, we gotta come up with that money.
Really?
What's your deadline for using this grant?
The projects have to be completed by October twenty-two.
You know, that was kind of like saying quiet in the emergency room, saying we didn't need to do a fall special.
I think, and I don't know this for sure, but I'm, I'm thinking I can come up with some money to keep the ball rolling through this winter so we can get a design out of our budget at the Iowa or the roadway construction account. And that'll get us in line to, to, to come up with the money and to keep things moving so we can complete the projects.
I see what you're saying. So if you pay as you go with some of your other budgets, you're thinking that we could actually slow roll it enough that you pay for your engineering immediately following the annual town meeting?
Correct.
Kelly, what is your opinion on that?
I haven't looked at the budget, but I, I don't doubt that he knows what his budget is and what his expenses are. So there's absolutely nothing wrong with doing it. That way, if it can be afforded, that's, that's a great way to do it.
I think the other thing we could do.
You can do it in phases. You can have the engineer do the design in phases, pay in chunks.
I know, I'm just dropping this, but we've worked on the complete streets project to get to this point. And I talked to this guy, Bill, who's from BSC, and he says, he told me the deadline was like four days away. So he goes, I can get this grant in if you want. So we submitted it and we got it, which we didn't plan on getting it, but we did.
Right, and, and here's my thought. Now, this is where it puts a little bit of a press on, on you and the advisory committee and all that. We historically have not had our annual town meeting in May when we can actually hold it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? What is, I think our BIWA says we're supposed to have it.
The BIWA is supposed to be the first Friday in May.
Right.
But we, we've been able to do it.
Okay, now I have a twitch. You haven't been doing it according to the BIWA?
No.
No, we've been, we've been carrying it over until June till we knew what the cherry sheet figures were and everything.
Yeah, you can, you can go ahead and like have your eyebrows, you know, excavate all the way out of your head. So, um, it, it sounds like, especially if we manage to hold our annual town meeting where we're supposed to hold our annual town meeting. We, we would probably be okay. Okay.
We can also do a special simultaneously with the annual.
Right. Understood. So, I see where you're going with that.
So we don't want to hold a special town before the annual?
No, we don't.
No, okay.
Right, and I think this.
Remember, some of this money can be paid through the Water Department's funds also.
Right, because a portion of the design is going to be for the water.
It's about fifty grand just for water.
Okay, so, and, and that helps.
There's a breakdown in there if you want.
Yeah, is it, what, is it the last page?
I would, I would appreciate a copy of that if you have a chance.
I literally just got that today.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so, so the way that a hundred eighty-seven thousand breaks out just for, for everybody's education. My God, I really gotta start bringing reading glasses.
Do you want me to read it?
No, it's okay, I got it. My arms are still long enough, just, just barely.
You have reading glasses, don't you?
Um, yeah, but they're probably too, I, I only need like a tiny bit, so.
You didn't ever try them, I'm not sure.
So project initiation data collection is like eighty-five hundred, field survey is twenty-eight five, preliminary roadway design is sixty, preliminary water main design is twenty-two, final roadway design is thirty-eight, final water main is thirteen five, and then prepare contract documents and bidding is sixteen five. And then there's some direct expenses, sixty-five hundred for pavement probes, thirty-five hundred for traffic counts, and then twenty-five hundred for mileage and printing. So, I'm not, I'm, I'm not aware of what's usual and customary for some of these, given the scope of the project. I won't claim to be an expert on it, but it sounds like that would give, I can see where, where each of those is its own discrete task. I can see where some of those could easily get covered.
Yes, it sounds like it's, it's a very doable project.
Yeah.
It's in line with, like Westbrookfield's done a couple of these similar grants, and that's, that's pretty much in line.
That's what the engineering cost is going to be, so.
And it's also, we're doing two projects actually.
At once, yeah. We're kind of rolling, it's really, actually it's three, because it's the water project and two road projects fundamentally.
Yeah.
So, it's, if you consider it sixty dollars a design per project, it seems a lot more reasonable.
Yeah.
And did we, I guess my one other concern though, um, would be key appropriations. Did we appropriate enough for the Water Department at town meeting to cover their portion of it until we get to the next town meeting? Are they in the same boat?
I don't know. I, this, there's a meeting tomorrow at eleven that I'm going to talk about that stuff. That's, that's their finances, but.
Adam, you can join us. No, it's okay.
So there's one more actually. Green Street has become qualified. If we want to, I know we have some money in engineering coming up already, but if we wanted to, we can apply for a Green Street CBDG grant, just like we did on Hayden High for September tenth.
I think that, I, I think that's a good idea, because there's always been problems on Green Street.
And that also needs a water.
Yes, that needs it.
Oh, yeah, so, and it would be an opportunity to tie it into this larger project?
No, that would have to be totally separate.
So this is a total separate one, yeah.
Okay.
And that would be probably like two years down the road.
Well, I was going to say that you have a longer, you tend to have a longer time on that, so we'd be looking at twenty-twenty-three for Green Street.
Yeah, more than twenty-three. And that's only if we, we didn't, we didn't have to apply.
One glass.
Okay.
So.
No, I, I think, I think you should apply for the Green Street now.
Yeah, do we need an actual, we don't need an actual vote for that?
No.
An actual what?
We don't need an actual vote to support that.
You don't need to vote on applications for Green.
And now who, who, who you'd be applying to for the Green Street?
That's through CMRPC.
Yeah, that's the CBDG. And have you already talked to the CBDG advisory? Were they on board with it?
Um, the only, I've only talked to CMRPC.
Okay.
Who is, who is, who wrote the grant for Hayden High and.
Right, but you want to get with our CBDG grant committee?
No, that is, that is on their list of projects.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so, I know, I haven't looked at their documentation in a while, okay. So they're aware that that's one you want to pursue?
That one is discussed, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um. And Adam, were you here for that whole conversation, or did you come in partway through?
Just partway through.
Okay, um, fundamentally, can you pass on the?
Is this your own coffee, Ryan?
What's that?
Can you bring copies?
Okay, so.
Make copies before you walk out of here, if you don't mind. Um, fundamentally, this engineering company assisted Ryan in applying for two separate grants that applied to some aspect of the, the piece of road between Maple Street and the end of Central. So, uh, one is a shared streets grant, which is for that intersection portion where Route nine crosses, because we can't touch the state's roads without, in essence, their, their knowledge and permission, right? And then complete streets for the balance of Central Street, because it's intended to make it bike and, and pedestrian friendly.
Oh, interesting.
When you, when you do a, a complete streets grant, it has to meet some pretty stringent requirements of making it friendly for all types of conveyance.
Is that why Westbrookfield is undergoing?
Yes.
Their crazy? Theirs is a little bit different grant, but it's going to be similar. Similar, okay. Theirs is a different grant, yeah.
Yeah, and so the, the, the only kicker is that the, and that engineering design is not covered by the grant monies and is a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars inclusive of the water main design for the infrastructure that's under the road. Because even though it can't, even though these grants can't explicitly include the water main work, since you've already got the road opened up in order to do the road work, it's a great opportunity to, to lower the cost of doing the, the water main work.
Yeah, water main work. Yeah, we, we have to do it once.
Yeah.
That's really exciting, that the town got so much money. So it's a total of half a million plus, right?
Yeah.
Five sixty-five, if, if my math is correct.
It's in the ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Well done.
It's great.
So.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Yes, well done. Okay, and, and are you guys positioned decently to do Green Street? Are, are they helping you as well? Is Cindy already gotten it?
This company has not.
Okay, is Cindy doing it, or is Kathy?
No, CMRPC is going to write the grant for Green.
Oh, really? Okay, great.
And then we'll sign it and it'll be submitted for.
And then they'll administrate, and then we'll pay him to administrate it?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yuck, yuck, yeah, let's go say Kathy, you know, because she should help.
I don't think they have the go-ahead to apply for that yet.
What's that?
They don't have the go-ahead to apply for that yet, but I think we're going to in the next few weeks.
They have to hold the hearing first, which is one of the reasons they have to advertise it for two weeks and then hold the hearing.
Got it.
And, yeah, and they're looking for someone from the town to sign off on, um, environmental impacts.
Okay.
So.
So environmental impacts, they need to take it to our CONCOM.
Exactly, that's what I said. He asked if I would do it, and I said absolutely not, because I'm not signing off on something that I have no knowledge. This is not my wheelhouse.
And we have a, we have a, we have a very, we have a really good team in place right now in our CONCOM, so, and.
Yeah, so we, we need to reach out to CONCOM and see if, if, do we have a conservation agent or just there, or a conservation commission?
Just the, the commission.
In, in the chair, in the chair.
So it'd probably be best for you, probably for you to reach out to Sue Brogan and get introduced to her.
I've actually spoken to her already, so I will, I will reach out to Sue and see.
See how she wants to handle that piece of it.
Then he suggested that it be one of the selectmen. It's like, no, no, we need somebody who actually can sign off, because they're going to be on the hook, they're going to be responsible for the environmental impact if they're signing off. That all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so they need to know what they're looking at. So, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, so.
Some of the construction aspect for this project out here on Central Street. Uh, I already asked if we could keep the diagonal parking, because I think that, that would upset people if we don't.
It would.
Yeah.
It most likely would.
And, and complete streets is not friendly to diagonal parking usually, because you have a width that you have to work in.
Right.
Um, he thinks we can do it here.
Okay.
That way we won't lose parking, so that's, that's really good.
That would be good.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I want to reuse and reset some, a lot of the granite that we already have.
Right.
And that saves a lot of money there too.
Yeah, great. And maybe I, I will no longer have my death trap of an ice pond right behind my driveway. That would be very exciting. I kept threatening to go up to the barn and get a bunch of cold patch and just fill, fill in the gap so that I don't die in the winter.
There's a light at the end of the tunnel there.
So, all right.
Then I've noticed another thing which you've done. You put a lot of cold patch right in front of like the granite areas out here in front.
I paved it, yeah, yeah, I paved it.
Yes, because that was the place people very commonly, they tripped and they fell in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a, a tax collector back when I was here, she fell and she broke her ankle in it. So, I've seen that you've done that, and so that's good, so thank you for doing that.
It's time, it's time for you to get this free done.
Yeah, great, okay, looking forward to it.
All right.
Okay.
If you, well, you have what you need tonight at least, so, that's good.
Yes.
Thank you for the good news.
Yeah, you're welcome. Have a good night.
Awesome.
Okay, right, tonight.
Okay. Second piece of new business is the document shredding services contract?
What happened was we were asked to look into procuring an, an industrial type of shredd.
Yep.
That's really expensive.
They are very expensive.
And they burn out really easily.
Yeah.
So I asked Karen if she would look into shredding services, which are fairly inexpensive. Um, they certify this, everything shredded onsite. You get a barrel that has a lock on it, so once the documents are in, they're locked in, you can't take them out.
Yeah.
They shred it onsite. They give you a receipt for your procurement, so you can show that you, the documents were disposed of properly. And it's extremely cost efficient. What, is it a hundred and forty for the year?
It's a hundred and forty for the whole year. It's thirty-five dollars every time they change it. We could, it was sixty-five. They agreed to go to ninety-five since she would have done.
Gallon, gallon bins, yes, because I looked up the state bid and went, uh-uh, we get this for ninety, we get the ninety-five gallon bin for this price. So Karen followed up on it, and so we'll have a ninety-five gallon bin with a lock, though. When it's fall, they come and they shred it and give us back our empty bin. We have appropriate paperwork for the state showing that our records have been disposed of properly, so that will help with. And we don't have to eat the cost of a shredder.
Right.
And maintenance of a shredder, and then how do we prove that what we shredded, that we shredded them properly?
Right.
This, this solves a lot of.
Those issues.
Legal issues that, that are potential problems for the town.
Right.
It's a state bid, so didn't have to go out for procurement.
Yep. And, and this puts us in a good position, because I know that we're talking about going after the grant for the King system stuff.
Yes, as a matter of fact, a letter came out from Governor Baker with the, uh, to the towns yesterday. Um, actually, right as I was leaving, and I forwarded it to Kathy, and she's already working on the application for the best use practice, um, financial best use practice, I believe, is what the, what it falls under to get a grant to cover the entire destruction of the records and the cleaning up and reorganization, the shelving and the microfilming of all the documents.
That would be great.
And hopefully we'll get it. It's, it's been given to towns. Um, there's a record of this being a funded project for other cities and towns.
Okay, great.
So we have a good shot at getting it.
Oh, good.
And getting this, um, getting all the records in one location, very nicely organized, and having a very searchable database.
For the, for that?
Yes.
For the items that have been.
Now, is this King Association, they underneath, um, this grant program?
No, they have nothing to do with the grant. Um, when, when I found out what their quote was for the project, I kind of, I, I looked at Mike and said, well, this quote's only good for six months, and we're not going to have free cash in time, and we're not going to do this until the next annual town meeting. And, and then I thought about it for a minute, and I went, wait a minute, complete, the, the community compact grants are coming up.
Yeah, they're coming up too.
So I spoke with Kathy, who said that yes, absolutely. She did some research, and this is absolutely a, a project that the complete, uh, community compact would, uh, back, so.
Okay, great.
That we don't have to wait till next year to get it done.
I had, um, I had gone last Wednesday to Worcester County Town Corks meeting, and, um, I was talking to some of my friends, town cork friends about this, and they said King is very expensive. And they gave me the name of, um, she's a town administrator that used that, they used their service, and she said it would be a good idea to maybe call them and ask them what they thought of them.
Yes, yeah, they did give us references, so we can, we can look at those. But in the meantime, it's, it's not a bad thing to have the quote to go out for the grant. And if we do get the grant and we find a company that's as efficient and may do a different job within the same budget, we have that option.
We know if there's, um.
It's well below the procurement level, though, for going out for bids, so.
So, um, but this looks like a good option, though, in terms of like near term. I know it doesn't address our, our, our longer term backlog, but this would at least give us an opportunity to shred as we go.
Yes, yes, and, and once we have the, um, records project up and running, there will be lots of documents that need to be disposed of properly. Well, of course, we have to request permission to destroy them through, um, the Secretary of State's office, through the Secretary of the Commonwealth, pardon me, um, for records, under the records retention laws. But it's a good start.
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so do you, do we, do you guys want to take a look at the contract, or do you want to just make a motion to accept it? Since it's a state bid.
State bid. No, I think I'll make, Kelly's gone over it and she knows, and I trust her judgment. So, um, I would make a, a motion that we accept the state bid for, um, document service contract.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's for Prosh, that's to accept the Prosh Red security contract, so. Does it, does it have a place to sign, or are you taking, going to take care of it?
There's no place to sign, no.
We're actually purchasing a service that doesn't require.
Player contract, yeah.
Require a contract. It's an ongoing lovely service.
Okay, so it's basically literally like trash.
Yes.
It's more informational than anything else?
Yes.
It was just on here as a contract, that's why I was asking, so. Got it. All right, so old business. You said, you provided a status on the two thousand and twenty-one articles, it looks like?
Yes, I found the two thousand and twenty-one articles and some two thousand and eighteen and some twenty twenty. I jotted them down out of order, so they're not in order on the list. But I was just trying to transform my notes into this format so that it would be easy to follow. We can go through it article by article. We did this two weeks ago, so there isn't a lot of change, but however. I left the boiler and the snow cleats in the hands of the Town Hall Improvement Committee, and they have been very efficient. Um, the, there will be people in on the nineteenth to remove the asbestos for the boiler to get started, and so that is up and running. And the snow cleats, we have a call out, and this is Al and Dawn and that committee that's doing this. Um, they have a, they have a call out to the person who is supposed to be doing the snow cleats to schedule it as soon as possible, because we want to get those up before it gets cold. So that's moving forward.
Okay.
The shed for the transfer station. So apparently there was a concrete slab funded, and it was funded in two thousand and twenty, but has not been put in yet.
Okay.
So what I, what I need to do, and I just, I just found this out last week, that, um, I need to speak with the people at, who are running the transfer station, and we need to find out where they got their numbers from, because there's been funding in two separate years. We had the, was it four thousand dollars for the pad, which was in two thousand and eighteen, pardon me, not twenty twenty. And then we did the shed.
Okay.
This year, in two thousand and twenty-one. So when I, I don't know that, that four thousand dollars will be enough anymore with the way building materials have skyrocketed, and this is, this is.
A combination of building materials, and I know that our highway department had historically done a lot of the dirt work for things like concrete slabs.
Okay, so yeah, so the excavation is, is, is something that, we'll have to talk to Ryan. So I just need to coordinate everybody, because I only found out about this missing piece. I think it was last Wednesday that I, I found out about the missing piece, because when I asked, what's going on with the shed? And who's, who's running this? I was told nothing, not yet.
Got it.
So, but we'll follow through on that. Um, the Common Street, the, um, eighteen Common Street, we're currently waiting for the title search. They take up to four weeks to be done. If they're not busy right now with the current market, title searches are off the wall. They're. They're straight out with them, so we're hoping that four weeks is a good, a good call for the, um, amount of time it'll take. It can take up to six or seven weeks to get the title search back. The master plan, we have a quote for twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, now that's not a realistic quote for a master plan. Master plans cost anywhere from sixty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do. So I need a little more detail on this and find out exactly what was quoted. Um, under Mass General Law, the planning board is the one responsible for creating a master plan, no one else. The planning board. In a town this size, master plans are designed for cities. They're not designed for little towns and there are a lot of things that are included in a quote master plan. That don't apply to little towns.
Have you reviewed the one that was done previously?
No, I have not, I was not aware that there was one done previously.
Right, so there was one done previously.
So maybe that's why this was so inexpensive, a quote was because it's an update, not an actual new master.
Correct, that's, that's the reason why I was interrupting you, sorry, there was a method, there was a method to my madness on that one.
Anytime. So I need to find, thank you Karen, I get a copy of that and review.
Yeah, and I suspect because I think it was CMRPC that supported us in getting our first master plan done, we had a master plan committee that was stood up. A purpose-built committee just because the, the planning board.
When was that?
Was pretty much flat out, God, I think it was, uh, I think it's six years ago?
Six years ago?
Yeah.
Master plan committee?
Yeah, and I think it was only, it was only five, I think they're only good for five or ten years, actually it's longer than that, because I think they're good for ten years and I think it expired, so. It was, it was when I first got, yeah, it was, it was like a little bit after I first got to town, actually, so. Um, so it was probably more on, on the order of like probably ten or twelve years ago.
Oh, so it's been a long time.
Yeah, I think it was in the, in the, in between period, like after you retired out of town clerking before you came back as a, on the member of board of selectmen.
May twenty-eleven.
May twenty-eleven, there you go.
When it expired or when it was done?
That's when the, according to the website, that's when the planning board unanimously approved the master plan document. Submitted by the Open Space Master Plan Committee.
There you go.
It's up on the, uh.
And is this committee still functioning?
Not.
No, I don't think so.
No.
Truly, no, it, it, it's been defunct though, um, I know there were a couple of people interested. I know Clarence was trying to put it back together on his way out of board of selectmen, because he had expressed a willingness to, to try to get us. A refreshed master plan because it's handy when applying for certain types of grants.
Can I have some names?
And you have some names.
People who will see if they're still interested if you want, they were never officially appointed, it was just, yes, please.
Yeah, and there's a list on the, uh, the PDF that's online, there's a list of past and present as of twenty-eleven members.
Okay, oh, so the master plan is online?
Yeah, it's on the town website.
It's on the town website.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's under Boards and Committees, the Open Space Masters, Master Plan.
I like hearing when things are on, on the website, because the more things we have up there, the better for the residents to see what's going on.
Absolutely, so, so that, that is what all of that is based off of, so I, I think given the. Constraints and type of master plan that it is, because it is focused towards like open space preservation and, and, and some other pieces. Um, I think that's why it's a different scope than what you expect to see.
Excellent, that makes me feel so much better. Um, the walking path, all the contracts are signed, the engineers engaged, the contractors engaged. And they should be hopefully breaking ground, uh, by the end of the month. And they'll be finished, they, they're required to be finished by June of twenty twenty-two. Chairlift, yeah, still working on that one. That one's not going quickly. But you know, in my own defense, I've been here.
Where's that chairlift supposed to be put in? Is, where's the chairlift supposed, is it from outside to inside?
No, it's.
No, it's just for the stairs to go up to the floor. And it's a platform that will actually, you can put a wheelchair on, a superior wheelchair and bring it up.
Locks it up and, yeah. Does anybody go upstairs anymore?
So the whole concept.
Does because it's not handy.
Got it, okay.
And the upstairs needs a lot of work done.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew, I knew it needed a lot of work, that's right.
Well, the work was completed, it was beautiful up there. And we had a town, a town, um, administrative assistant who decided she was gonna shut off the heat. And when she shut off the heat, everything started to peel upstairs, mm, because it was, it had been done all overnight. It's a mess up there right now. Because we could use it again, I mean, you could use, like, we used to use it years ago for like plays. And they've had, like, when we had our three hundred and twenty-fifty anniversary, we used it up, we had like a ball.
My daughter was three, she did a recital up there for a local dance teacher. When I went up there, it was like, I've been here before.
It would be good from like a meeting space perspective.
Yeah.
That's where we used to have town meeting was upstairs.
Yeah, you could easily hold town meeting up there.
And then if I date myself, when I was growing up, the back parking lot of, um, Cassie's property was the Blanchard School. And we would always come here and we'd also have our plays upstairs and they used to have minstrel shows and all kinds of things upstairs.
Nice.
It would be nice to see it used again for, for the purpose.
And don't forget, they hoisted Elsie the Cow.
Yeah, Elsie the Cow was up there too.
Yeah, if, if it's one of the big ones that you can put a wheelchair on and not have to have someone.
Yeah, it is, it's a.
Move from, because.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's that type, it's a, it's a, it's a full platform kind of, in essence.
We go right up onto it and, and lock and go.
When Bill Simpson, Young Bill was in here, didn't he say he's having problems finding somebody to install it, is that the problem?
Well, they had a, a proposed agreement with a company called Garavanta to install the, um, the lift. I got a copy of that agreement, was it last Wednesday? We finally located it. It was sent to me via email, um, because it was actually just a proposal. Because had it been a contract, I was going to contact them and tell them that they are a violation of their contract. However, it was just a proposal.
Got it.
And it expired.
Right.
So now I'm waiting to get a copy of the extension that they offered. Because if it's an expired proposal and it hasn't been acted on, we haven't done anything, we may be starting from scratch. I don't know yet, we may not be, they may, they may be able to come and do it, I, but.
Yeah, well, in particular, because we've been trying even since prior to its expiration to get them in there, so. I think there is documented con, contact prior to the expiration of that proposal and they just never returned the contact.
Yeah, and that's the impression I'm getting, so what I, I was discussing with the Town Hall Improvement Committee or Bill in particular. Was using it as specs to go up to bid.
Right.
Since we've got the money sitting in an article, if we can find somebody who are capable and responsible. And can install it with the same specs for close to the same money, we may be, we may have, we may have the room, be able to move forward on it.
Yeah.
So that's where we are.
Has the, um, I wonder, so, I helped manage another building, it's a couple hundred years old and. We had a, um, a multi-level, uh, like, um, I don't know what you would call it. It wasn't the fancy, where you could roll right up onto it and go, it was like you had to transfer and move up. And we had contacted a company and they suggested just, because it was only one floor, they had to go up, but putting in an elevator. Like not a full-blown metal elevator shaft and all that, but they have like smaller ones that are designed for one person to roll up on. A gate closes and they just go up and then come out again.
So basically a chairlift.
Essentially, but just a vertical shaft chairlift, yeah.
Can you, can you find out?
I can try to find it again, this is a couple of years ago, yeah, this is a couple of years ago, but I can.
That would be fantastic, that might give us an alternative, it might not work with the way the stairs are set up, but.
That was the problem that we had, was that our stairs were narrow and like the corner we were trying to cut was too much of a corner. To make it so that unless someone was there essentially to like help the individual, they couldn't make it up.
Yeah, ours is actually.
Defeats the purpose.
Ours is actually perfect for installation of that type of lift, I mean, from spec perspective. You couldn't actually engineer it better to, to put that sort of thing in there, so.
Excellent.
Well, that was one of the problems we had here, we're talking about putting a regu, a regular elevator. We would have had to put it where the renovated old ba, the old restroom is. And that's where they were thinking about putting the elevator.
Okay, and so it actually has been discussed, but that, that's injured, if it's, if it's a.
It's essentially, you cut a hole in the floor of the second floor and it's like, has four holes that essentially, yeah, it's just a vertical.
Yeah, so that would be fantastic if you could find any information and forward it over to me.
But with it being a historical building, would, would we be allowed to cut?
Well, that's something that we'd have to consider, but it'd be good to have the information to kind of see what we need to do so we can run it by whoever it is that we need to. I saw that there was a generator in two thousand and eighteen.
That was purchased because there was residual in that account, they did get a replacement for that generator.
Okay, good, so I can take that off the list, because I saw there was money in the account, um, when I was going over the. Accountant's report.
Yeah, there's, there's like some residual, like, like under six thousand dollars left in the account.
All right.
Yeah, what was voted was something like thirty-five K and they, they bought the generator for less than what got allocated at town meeting.
The concrete pad, this is the same issue as the, as the shed for the transfer station, so see notes above, thank you. Um, computer security, the town allocated two thousand dollars for computer security, which is actually a fantastic idea. I asked, um, Jacob for a proposal on what he suggested, um, to. See what we need for equipment or programming or storage space depending on what we already have. Which I don't have a full, um, marketing knowledge of at this point.
Do we have any off-site backups?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes, we do. And then the PEG account, this was wonderful news, um, PEG is the cable access money. Money was allocated, not this fiscal year, but the prior fiscal year. And when I looked at the report, the accounts aren't balanced for last year yet, which is perfectly normal. It's the beginning of August, we only closed the books in July fifteenth. So not concerned about that at all, but the balances weren't carried forward, so it looked like we were working in the negative. Turns out that there's enough money to hire a cable coordinator in that account that's already been allocated. So we can move forward with, um, with that hiring, so we need the Personnel Board to meet so that we can get a job description. We need to get it to you, we need to get it to the board for approval, according to the bylaws, both boards have to, um, weigh in on it. And be it, post it and hopefully we'll find somebody, um, who can perform the task.
So who has, Sharon have a job description?
They're working on, I'm putting this job description.
Okay, good, yeah.
Great, outstanding, so we do have some funding, that's, that's a good story.
Very happy to hear that I got an opportunity to speak with Lori this morning. Speaking of which, um, I had asked her for an update on the reconciliations for all of the accounts and they were emailed to you today.
Oh, great. I did not see it come through, that's my bad, I had looked yesterday, but. Okay, um, so we sort of hit on cable coordinator then in the process of going through that, so. Fundamentally, y- you need an updated job description, it needs to go through Personnel and Us and then we can get it posted.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, policy review.
I did not, um, go over any policies, um, in light of the other.
Activity.
Activity that's been buzzing around.
And then, are the job descriptions?
They're in there, yes, so the first one that I sent you was for the animal control officer. And that one came up. It was, it was an inter, it's an interesting story. The animal control officer was called by the state police because there was a bat in the barracks.
There was a bat in the barracks?
A bat in the barracks. She called the animal inspector who then explained that, that he only deals with actual bites. And things of that nature, which is correct, because that is what the state job description requires of him. He deals with animal bites and barn inspections. So under Mass General Law, the animal control officer is responsible for primarily domestic animals. That's it, and what the bylaws or the town's bylaws. Have in addition to domestic animals, the town's bylaws are silent as to what types of animals, just as follows. Basically, it parrots back Mass General Law. So there's nothing in the town's bylaw that isn't actually already in Mass General Law. So when I did, um, when I looked at the job description. The only thing I changed in it was I changed it from animals to domestic animals. So transporting injured animals, we, she's not gonna transport a fox. That's, that's a wildlife issue and, and under Massachusetts law, you cannot relocate a wild animal unless you are specifically licensed to do so. So, um, she had called, told the state police to contact a wildlife removal service. Which was the appropriate thing to do, so all I did was, and I sent you both so that you could see, then all I did was change a couple of words and it's just added domestic and that's it. And other than that, it's the job description that was put together by the Collins Center.
Okay, so can I get a, uh, motion to approve the animal control, amended animal control officer job description?
Yes, you have a motion to, uh, to, uh. Motion to, um, accept the, uh, animal control, animal control officer with a, do we put in it, you said?
As amended.
Oh, as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A second.
All in favor?
So one of the things that also came up is that in the town's, and, and also this, this animal control officer. Said that they were the animal inspector, which they're not, we have one of each here, which is perfectly normal. Um, so I pulled that out of the description as well, which I, I, I mentioned in the email, but I didn't mention just now, so I apologize for not reminding you of that.
Right, right, that was the other amendment, so.
Yes.
So then do we, we probably need then a limited job description for the current animal inspector?
No, you don't.
Because the state definition of it covers it.
State appoints the animal inspector and they have their own description, the town's description is completely unnecessary.
Okay, great.
Because it's a state position, paid for by the town, that's required by the state in every town.
Yep, okay, great.
It's basically for disease control and domestic, um, wildlife, fowl, um, you know, so rabies.
H one, H one N one and equine, equine and cecalitis and all that.
That's basically what, that's why they do the barn inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah, the barn, yeah, because I know, he has to go, my father was.
He has to go and count the chickens.
My dad was the animal inspector and plus he was on the Board of Health and, yeah, I remember he had to go out to all the farms and he had to.
Yeah.
Count all the animals.
Make sure that they're living in human conditions and that, you know.
Yeah, I remember one time it even entailed, uh, somebody had some pigs in town getting out all the time, you said to go and round up the pigs. And now this is a position you said that's appointed by the state.
Yes, the town recommends, it's, it's an appointment that's done every spring, the town recommends and the state actually does the appointment. Based on their recommendation.
Well, years ago, I'm sure they could do that.
From the state, they get their paperwork from the state, they file their paperwork back with the state.
Oh, okay.
So the town doesn't actually need a job description for that.
Okay.
And I pulled it out of here because you're creating a dual role.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't need that.
Okay, and then you also have reviewed the town treasurer job description.
Yes, and the Collins Center, um, did a really nice job on, well, they did a nice job on all of the, the job descriptions, actually. I won't, as I said, there's only a couple little things I found that need to be changed and that's only because of Brookfield's particular, um, circumstances. So I would recommend that you accept the town treasurer's job description as presented by the Collins Center.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the treasurer's job description as presented by the Collins Center.
A second.
And just as a, a brief piece of discussion, one, one gap that you did point out is that our expectation that HR function would fall under the treasurer's office. But that's something we can cover. But that's something we can catch.
Actually in here. It's actually in here. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. It's the eleventh bullet. Administers group, health, life, disability, county retirement processes reports.
Yeah, it doesn't call it, call it out as human resources, but that's fundamentally the functions that we're talking about.
Are, yeah. And, and they're involved with, um, in the hiring. They're responsible for taking care of all the paperwork. And making sure that all the W twos are filed. So other than. A complaint of some type of discrimination or, um.
Or performance management or stuff like that, which is, which is the supervisors who need to manage.
More in my wheelhouse as opposed to a treasurer's wheelhouse. But they would maintain the records of any actions taken and discipline and so on. So because they're responsible for personnel records.
Yep. So, um, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So what I will do tomorrow is post, um, the job using this description. And then we'll get it in the paper. I'm gonna set a deadline for applications for, um, September eighth. That'll give us time to review, um, the applications. I'm going to ask Lori and Brenda to review the applications with me. And then we'll give you all of the applications if you want them. And then we will also give you our recommendation based on what the applications are. Then we can schedule interviews.
Yes.
In however many you want. You can hire them right on the spot if you like.
Great.
I, that's a good idea. I, I approve of that.
It should go fairly, fairly quickly and smoothly.
Are there a lot of potential candidates for town treasurers out there?
That's gonna be painful.
Well, that's a good question.
Like, is, is a month enough time?
For, we, we posed, the last time I posted a position of this nature, we got, cause we posted it on Indeed. As well as in the local paper and online and, um. We got probably eighty-five applicants, of which five were qualified.
Yeah, a lot of people just.
And somewhere in Ireland, which was kind of freaky.
Was it one of the qualified people?
That was gonna be one heck of a commute. Yes, it was, actually.
We have something come into?
It was, it was gonna be one heck of a commute for that.
If I remember right, Karen.
Posted on Indeed too. We have people from other countries.
Yeah, other countries, yeah.
Yeah, I think Indeed just sends anybody, they look for, um, keywords. Then they just pop, that you pay them to pop your resume off to people who are within your search criteria.
Unless you, unless like if, if we post on there, if we post must be Massachusetts, must be, you know, within this area.
And it doesn't actually necessarily have to be someone from Massachusetts. There may be somebody who is, is looking to come home.
True, yeah. Or, or must be a US resident, cause then you won't get the international.
Were you gonna put it in the, um, the advocate from the municipal, from Mass Municipal?
It won't make it in time.
Oh, it won't make it in time, okay.
The advocate comes out, what, once a month?
Yeah, come here.
The beacon?
The beacon, I'm sorry. The beacon.
What was the deadline? I didn't catch the deadline for the advertise.
Telegram?
Um, well, we're gonna advertise and then ask them to have their resumes to either myself or to Karen. How would you like us to do that? Because they're all gonna come to us anyway, but.
Usually we have them send to Karen's email address, email address where the selectmen at.
Yeah, and then we can forward it to, she can forward them to me and then I'll distribute them to Lori and Brenda. After I speak with them and let them know that I just volunteered them for this.
They're not here, so.
Yeah, they're not here. And, and I know I already expressed this preference, but, um, I would like to see them all, even though you guys are gonna forward preferences. I don't know how y'all feel.
Yes, I'd like to see them.
Yep. Absolutely.
As long as there's not two hundred of them.
Well, why don't, why don't you forward them to me and then I'll take care of that because you've got enough to do without having extra deadline date, though I still didn't get it. They need to be back to us by September eighth.
Did you happen to call Charlton? Cause I know they were advertising food.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
Yeah, and, and typically where would you advertise? Would you do like the Western Springfield papers as well or just do kind of like?
Well, under the bylaw, we're required to post it in a local paper, so we're gonna do that. And then I don't know which is more prevalent in town, um, which, which would have the widest. I would imagine Turley Publications because they have the most newspapers.
Yep.
Um, that I'm aware of. I don't know, don't.
Stonebridge and the Telegram are the, yeah.
Yeah, I run it on a Sunday in the Telegram.
Yeah.
That's outrageous. Yeah, we, I don't know that we have the money for that though, Linda, so we have to, we have to.
Yeah, I would go with, I would go with Turley and Stonebridge.
And then you could always have, um, ask Brenda to put it out on the Treasurer Collectors.
Oh, yeah, it'll go out there. It'll go out on the Treasurer Collectors. It's gonna go out on the Small Town Administrators in Massachusetts, um. I'm trying to think if there's another group, although, and I'm trying to poach from another town just in case anyone's listening. So that we can get people who are already familiar with, with this particular wheelhouse.
Yep.
I've seen town positions for other places like on LinkedIn and stuff like that, because it's more of like a selected group.
Yeah, and actually LinkedIn, LinkedIn is not that expensive either, actually.
But it's, it's like a, it's less of a catch-all than like Indeed where you dump it in and then sends all the stuff like LinkedIn. It's.
So you and I are gonna work on this first link tomorrow so that we can get this up and posted. I've already got everything preset on the website. All I have to do is hit publish. So it'll go up on the website as well.
And I can share it on through all like, cause I have contacts in the, uh, the city government systems. So they might be able to share it.
Perfect. Cause the more we get it out, then the better, you know.
Yeah, if you, if you do put it on LinkedIn, let me know, cause I'm not that active, but I do have a really pretty broad network, including inside Massachusetts.
Okay, so the next thing we need to do is decide what the salary is gonna be. So you, there is. Potentially eighty-five thousand dollars in the salary line item for this particular position. That is not where we wanna go with this.
What, what, what did, what's the Collins Center numbers come in at for treasurer?
I do not know.
I'll have to look that.
They came in at.
I think it came in about, what, what it came out, I think if I remember correctly, it was roughly thirty dollars an hour, which comes out to be sixtyish.
That is not what people are, are paid. They're paid between, and, and this is just my own personal experience. With the, um, treasurers that I know, they're, they're paid closer to thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Yeah. So, we're looking at like seventy to seventy-five, somewhere in there. So if we put that range, seventy to seventy-five, you've got wiggle room to discuss.
Because didn't, didn't you say when I had talked, talked to you about it that we need somebody in here the four days a week?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm posting the job as a thirty-seven hour a week job.
Thirty-seven hour a week, yeah.
Which will be, you know, basically full time. But salaried position, so they know that they're, they're working full time.
For getting the work done.
They need to get the work done within however many hours they need to get the work done.
That's good.
So.
And you've discussed this, yeah, you told me you discussed this with Sarah also.
Yes. Not in any detail, but that, that this was a road that we were gonna take.
Even at thirty-six, at thirty-seven hours a week, if the salary is based off of that, you're looking at seventy thousand dollars, sixty-nine too.
Yeah. But you're looking at fifty-two point two weeks. You're not looking at fifty-two weeks.
Yeah.
Because there aren't fifty-two weeks in a year, oddly enough.
Okay, so seventy, seventy-six, forty-nine.
Yeah, a, a quick Google search said around eighty.
Yeah.
Is what like the.
Yeah, but we're smallish towns.
Well, yeah, that was just an average Massachusetts.
Saw how extremely successful your last search was, so.
Yeah, but we were, we were paying twenty thousand dollars less. Actually, we were paying twenty-five thousand dollars less. So I don't think we can even compare.
Yeah.
So, so the last time we were paying what we were paying and not paying what the market was.
So what's your cap?
And it's competitive right now.
What's your cap?
Well, if our, if our budget is, you said our budget is eighty-five? I'd say that's probably, that's the cap. But that's not our starting point.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that.
Absolutely not. So what I wanna do in the advertisement is put in a range.
I, I think I put.
Depending on.
Can you, can you put in ranges?
You can, you can, you could absolutely put a range in an app. And it's depending on experience and it's negotiable.
This is a contracted position. It's a salaried position, so it's negotiable.
I would put sixty-eight to seventy-four.
Oh, I was gonna say seventy to seventy-five.
Yeah.
That's what I, I put seventy to seventy. Adam, you think the same?
Yeah, I think seventy, seventy-five, yeah. Cause there'll be some that will just look at the first number. They'll just see the six, even though it's only a thousand dollars off.
Already had six. We don't need six. We're gonna go somewhere else, yeah.
And we want experience.
Right.
Yeah, they, they won't see sixty-eight. They'll just see six.
Good point.
Trying to, we're trying to woo somebody from another town that's already got it going on.
I know. We don't want somebody coming in that needs somebody to teach them.
Exactly. Exactly. I mean, a teacher, not a student.
I, I'm guessing the job market's pretty competitive now, based on mostly other job markets are pretty competitive.
And again, it's the same circular situation where if I wanted to go to, so this week is Collector Treasurer School. If I wanted to go to either one of those, like A, had to either work for a municipality or B, a collector or a treasurer or an assistant collector or an assistant treasurer. Well, you can't get the experience unless you already get the school. You can't get the school unless you already get the job, so. Yeah, that's what we, yeah. Same story that we discussed last time. Although they may have opened it up. I know that, um. I know that they're allowing other people into like assessor school or they were. I don't know since COVID hit what's going on with it now, but. Um, I could have attended and, and kept my credits up for my MAA certification. But I'm not allowed to use it because I'm not an assessor. So I can't say I have an MAA certification that I'm formally certified. Even though I need one class to get recertified. They won't recertify me. They'll give me the credits, but they won't recertify me. And I, I believe that's changed, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, cause you're not working the position.
Exactly.
Okay, so we covered job descriptions. We covered everything on the agenda. The one thing that was, I do want one alibi fire on the project list. Status on the, um, fire truck, cause the fire truck's not listed.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, and I know that the chief, I know during the staff meeting, the chief went over it and he's made good progress. But I know there were also some questions about depending on which vendor we picked, like we might be able to get some savings by buying the chassis in advance. And I don't know how complicated that would make the financing, so.
It's not. Actually, it's very, very common to do that. I've seen that happen in three other towns where they, that they, that's how they purchased the truck and had it built.
Yep. So, so, but if we could add that to the, to the punch list, that would be good. I didn't see anything else that was a.
Now, the fire truck wasn't, was voted this year?
It was this year.
Yeah.
I missed that, okay.
Pretty easy too.
It did.
Good catch.
Like a broke clock. That was one of my two for today. So, um. Doesn't look like we had any correspondence. Was there anything else we needed to cover tonight? Or that we're actually could legally cover tonight?
It wasn't in the agenda, but I was asked, um, just for by.
Making a face, I'm making a face.
No, just by other boards to keep them apprised if the selectmen make any changes on the COVID stuff that in town. Whether we go back to, the selectmen go back to virtual or we go back to hybrid or something like that.
Or masks or whatever.
Yeah, to keep the other boards apprised because they're kind of working off of, uh, taking suggestions from selectmen. Whatever the selectmen decide they'll kind of go with.
Can we reach out to the Board of Health and find out if there's any changes to guidance right now? I know actually they're recommending masks indoors.
Town Council has been keeping us surprised of what, what's being, recommending and requiring are two entirely different things. So we need to kind of tread lightly there until they're required. But, yeah, anybody who wants to wear a mask and feels more comfortable in a mask should be putting one on.
Yeah.
If that's what.
They wanna do.
They feel that that's what they need to do.
Country if someone wants to wear a mask.
So far.
Dag, damn it.
So far, yes, they can.
Beard friendly.
They are not beard friendly.
No.
It's hard to get a, well, the whole reason, and the whole reason actually why in a lot of military services, you can't wear a beard is because you can't get a seal. You can't get a seal on a mask.
You're not gonna get a seal on a cloth mask anymore. It's like trying to stop a mosquito with a chain life fence.
So, um. I think that's it then.
That's it.
So can I get a, a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.